Jerry.
Yeah.
You're making them.
Okay. Well, she had me up these weeks.
That's okay.
I moved on you make a motion that.
You can't do nothing unless we started it. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and start everyone. Um, September seventeenth, two thousand twenty five, six thirty P M. Special Board meeting in Village of Belmont. We have a roll call three.
Thank you all in here. Barbara is here.
Gary Lance, hello there.
Gary right here. Herschel Joyce is here.
Ms. Duncan here. Linda Isis is not here. She has not called me, but I did hear there's a dog escaped.
And Claudia Van Clur.
And Claudia, what is up to you? And her dog has taken something about taking her dog to.
IU.
Sorry. She didn't get a hold of me, but I bet something's going on. You know, and her dog is a service.
Right.
He was, uh, he wasn't well, what, two weeks ago now.
Okay. And then, um.
Big dog was.
And first is, um, Claudia Van Clur. Um, and we also have a pledge of allegiance again at the time that's behind us here. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Constitution, for which the states are the nation's individual liberty and justice for all.
Hey, we unlocked it, will you please?
It's unlocked.
I said lock it.
Oh.
We don't want anybody to escape.
I did, uh.
Yeah, Gary's trying to get out. We need to keep him in there.
I, I did wanna ask the board before we get started that if we in fact have visitors, um, if I could move these public comments to after the two thousand twenty three audit report, so that if they had any comments about anything that we would be voting on, they'd have that opportunity. Um, we do have a couple of visitors now. Does the board have an objection to moving it up or is it worth that?
No objection, will we?
I don't have any yet.
It's probably my family, I think.
Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and make a comment, but I'm gonna bring that up here to after the audit report, so that, um, if we have some things to say and they can see about what we're gonna talk about. And without getting it, I'm gonna turn the floor to Janet, sorry, over our audit today. Just from three audits.
All right. Um, what you're getting tonight is a preliminary copy. It is the final, but it's not bound yet. And the reason it's not is our, uh, girl that does all the reproduction and printing, uh, lost her nephew, uh, and, uh, he died about a week and a half ago, and she hasn't been able to come back in. So Carrie Bass, if you guys remember her, but yeah, but when her nephew passed away. And so anyway, she's gonna get them all put together when she gets back next week, but that's why you don't have a bound copy yet.
Can I make a quick hand here? You know what happened there.
Well, I don't. I just know that they found him gone. And he lived in Ohio and, yeah, his founding's gone, so it's hard. Um, I don't know if I got one for everybody. I'll try.
That is a, um, preliminary copy here, too, in case.
Yes. Okay. There's another one.
All right.
I think we did it over here. There you go.
Okay.
All right. Um, everything is done in twenty three, and once again, you know, we have everything balanced and reconciled and cleaned up. We believe twenty four will go a lot easier. We've got it half done, um, because we have everything. And, uh, so if you look over at the first letter that's in there, that's the letter that I always like, because it tells you if you have a clean opinion. And in our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the respective financial position of the governmental activities, the business type activities, each major fund, and the aggregate remaining fund information for the Village of Belmont as of April thirtieth, two thousand twenty three. So you have a clean opinion. And, uh, that is getting harder for you to have just because the state expects you to do a lot of things, and the federal AICPA rules are just keep expanding, and it's things you cannot do. You know, they want me to do a survey of your internal control, and you know, it's like you've got a computer in every one of your offices, and you're all communicating, and all the board members have individual, uh, email addresses for Belmont, which is crazy. So we're still hashing that out. One thing that we got last week is June from the Controller's office let me know that we were going to have to file the A F R with an email address for every person that's listed on the report. That is not possible. And that's not possible for any of the villages I do, and so I've got a phone call set up to talk to her about that. Because regardless of the fact that they might want that, they made that their new rule, it might be good for like the county government, or for a bigger school corporation or something else, but it's not gonna work here. So I am gonna talk to her. She made the comment that she was deciding she'll accept these without everybody getting new email addresses, and we're not gonna do that. So I'm just gonna call and talk to her and see if I can take that. The other thing is there's a new publication that's out about villages and small community operations, and it says that you can do without an audit for five years. However, if you have any proprietary funds, water, sewer, garbage, it excludes it, and you have to have an audit. So they didn't really help us. They should've helped us, but they didn't. And there's nothing we, you know, I did talk to the other Controller's office in Springfield, and I, you know, gave them my opinion that I thought was very poor, the way they were hit and the way they put you in that position. But unless we don't have an operating proprietary fund to collect money, then unless that's gone, there's nothing we can do that can poison audit, so.
I thought there was a clause about.
There is a clause, but it's not gonna help us, yes, yes. Um, I do have a question, and there's a gal up there. Her name's Judy, and she's really great, and she likes me, and she likes my reports, and I've been talking to her if there's any exception, like, um, a limit of money or anything. But every limit of money she and I have come up with has nothing to do with it, if, that you get excluded because of proprietary funds, so. Okay, so if you skip over and look over at page seven, that is what we call your M D N A, the Management Discussion and Analysis. If you don't read any of this report when you get home tonight, or tomorrow, or whenever, this is a great one to read because it summarizes what has gone on for the village for the twenty-three year, twenty-two and twenty-three are compared, and it just tells you what's, what's changed and what it compares to from the year before. And those are, that's a very good thing to read because it gives you an overall analysis of what's happened. Um, it'll tell you what the revenue is by source for each year. It'll tell you what the operating expenses were from one year to the other over on page eight. It's just a real good little synopsis of what has happened. And then the summary, that's at the bottom of page nine, that is actually written by, uh, your board president, your, your mayor, and we put that in there. Just tells what's going on with the village, which is a great thing to have each year. And so if I could have you read anything, I know the numbers are pretty boring, but just give them to you in a little synopsis that, you know, gives you some real good information.
Yeah, have those, have that preliminary changed, or just changed from preliminary that, that report?
Uh-uh.
Okay, if I did, I did look at that.
Yes, you did. Yeah, you did. Okay, good deal. And, uh, but the number comparison, I don't, if you gave them that, that's a great, yeah, the number comparison is the same too, but it's the thing I wish you guys, I mean, if you're gonna look at anything, that's easily. If you look over. Copies, right. Uh-huh. There are, yeah, no, they're your copy. Now, we're gonna give you new bound copies to go through yours. And that is the final report. It's just that needs a binding on it, so. Okay, the statement of net position, which is over on page eleven, um, it tells you the entire government. So it tells you total for the village, that the total assets are seven hundred fifty-seven nineteen, and the government side of it is three sixty-nine, six thirty, and the business activities are three eighty-one, oh eighty-nine. And as you can see, the cash is in the governmental funds, and the assets are in the business type funds, and that's normal when you have, um, an operation like this. Um, there are prepaid expenses, and that's your prepaid insurance, at forty-six, twenty-nine, which just means you've got that much money you prepaid, that if you quit business on the last day of the year, that would be your money to pay. The liability, um, the accounts payable is a hundred and forty-five, four thirty-two. The customer deposits is twenty-one, nine thirty-nine. And then the long-term liabilities, if you look, you owe two hundred and twenty-two thousand. Twelve thousand is due within a year, and two hundred and ten is due more than a year away. Um, your net position, if you take your assets plus your liabilities, your net position of what you have net in your hands is three hundred and sixty-five thousand, nine seventy-seven. But please note that the governmental fund has three hundred and sixty-eight, seven eighty-two of net position, but the business type activities, which is water, sewer, garbage, that is all in the negative for twenty-eight, oh five. You came close to breaking even, so. Um, if you turn over to the next page, this is the activity for the year. And as all government reports go, they always wanna tell you the expenses first and the income last. So if you look over on page twelve, you'll see that your revenue is a hundred and twenty-seven, two eighty-three, and your expense is right up above there at seventy-eight, six twenty-two. So you had a net income, a net revenue of forty-eight thousand, six fifty-one for the year. And with the other money that you had at the beginning of last year, you end up with a net, um, basis of three sixty-five, nine seventy-seven. So things are clicking along okay. They're just a struggle, you know, but they're, but you're doing fine. And if you turn over to page thirteen, you'll see that this is the government fund broken out, so you can see the two funds, the special revenue and the general fund. It's the same thing you saw at the front. It's just split out in what makes up the government. And then if you turn over to page, um, seventeen, you'll see that's your proprietary fund balance sheet. So if you wanna see what they own and what they owe on their own, the water, sewer, and garbage, you'll see that there's three hundred and eighty-one, oh eighty-nine in assets, of which two hundred and seventy-nine thousand are fixed assets. So they're, they're assets that have a life more than a year, and that was your net cost. So whether or not you could turn that cash, you don't have as much cash as you have assets. Your liabilities are three hundred and eighty-three, eight ninety-four. And so if you had to turn the, the business activities to cash, it would probably be a hard time to do, so. But you're breaking even, and I know that you've done great to do, you know, to do what you're doing. Everything's more expensive, and everything's harder to do. So your net position is twenty-eight, oh five, negative. If you look over on page eighteen, that tells you what your income and your expenses were. And your operating revenue was seventy-two thousand, one fifty. Your operating expenses were sixty-seven, nine fifteen. Now remember that only forty-seven, nine twenty-three right there were operation and maintenance. That's all cash. But the other's just your depreciation, which is really not cash spent, it's been previous years. So you end up with a net operating gain of four thousand, two thirty-five. And what's kicking you good is the interest expense. As you can see, the interest expense down below there is seventeen, oh sixty-six. And your income before you had any transfers to help pay the bills was nine thousand, eight seventy-seven. And the governmental funds gave you eighteen, oh, oh, five, which made your net position as close to break even as it can get, so. Because of that influx of money that's coming from the governmental funds, it helps your proprietary funds break even. But if you notice, you're making a net income before you have to pay all that interest, the interest, what's, not making any money. Okay, we turn over to, now, these are all the notes of financial statements, and you can read those at your leisure. They're just telling you what the definitions of everything is in the report. When you get over to page twenty-eight, you'll see that you start seeing the real meat of this, which is the bonds payable. Um, and so it tells about the bonds, and it tells that the bonds are currently due twelve thousand, and the long-term portion is two hundred and ten. That's what we saw up on the balance sheet, that the rate is five point one two five over forty years, pretty good rate, pretty good timing. And so then down at the bottom, it just tells you that you had to have eleven-four, and you had to accumulate that much money in order to pay the bond and interest. And the depreciation on the bond and interest has to match, so it just shows you what's expected. Um, when you turn the next page on twenty-nine, it's a little easier to understand and read, is that it shows you that you have two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars due at the end of, of, uh, two thousand twenty-three, that you have annual interest of eleven thousand and seventy dollars, and the bonds due were twelve thousand. And it also shows you what you're gonna have due in the next, up to the bond lease is paid. And to do that, we just go through and tell you what the five years is gonna look like. I always say, look at the first five years, that it'll tell you what you're gonna have to come up with over five years. And if you turn to page thirty, you'll see that there's water, water system bond, and this is the same bond, and it's just showing you in a different way where we stand. And so you're back to your same two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. It just is that I have to give you all the different ways to look at it so you truly understand what's there. And then this does break it down for the five years, and comes back to your two hundred and twenty-two thousand. And, and over the next, to twenty thirty-seven, you'll have eighty-eight thousand, two hundred fifty-three dollars in interest. Next year, this year, actually, the interest went down for twenty-five, and then, uh, for twenty-four, twenty-five, and then in twenty-six, we'll see another drop in the interest, so it's, it's getting down there where it's at least going down some. Um. If you go over to page thirty-three, this is a pretty complicated little list, but what it means is that did we have as much inter-fund receivables back and forth from each fund as we did payables? And what you'll see here is the general fund, they loaned a hundred and sixteen, seven forty-one out, and they got, they've got payables to go back to the other funds of seventeen thousand. And that's pretty, pretty common. Water, sewer, and garbage need money. And so they have payables of eighty-three thousand that go back to the general fund. But what I do is reconcile that, so we know that everything that went out has to come back, and we know where the money was, what fund got what. Um, your inter-fund expenses, your general fund had inter-fund expenses, in other words, payments that they made between funds of seventeen, nine ninety-two, and those went to water, sewer, and garbage, and it just tells you that we reconciled it. Then this next part is the important thing. Your general fund had appropriations of fifty-seven, six forty-three. That's what we told the county that we were gonna spend. And we had expenditures of sixty-three, five seventeen. This is not material, but it is, you know, it is a concern because what the state looks at is to see, are you doing something to take care of this? The water fund helped us a little bit, but not much, because then they spent fifty-nine, four thirty-three, so they are also not, you know, they spent more than they had appropriated. And the same thing happens with sewer, and the same thing happens with garbage, although not so much. So what that tells someone looking at this is that to run this operation is, you know, really tough, and you're having to spend more money than what you take in, than what you actually appropriated you were gonna have. That's not unusual, 'cause something breaks down, you need something, something happens. That's not an unusual thing, so. Um, the debts, the fund balances that we have are sewer and garbage, and everything else is positive. And I have to give the state that information, and there's not much for them to do about it, because if they go to every village down here, they're gonna get the same result, so. Uh, if you look at subsequent events at the bottom of page thirty-three, you'll see that it says there wasn't anything subsequent to the end of the year that was material. That was a big deal that I had to note. Now, if you remember when the pandemic was on, there was a big note in there because we were in the pandemic, and you were waiting on funds, and ARPA funds were going on. And now there's really not anything significant that's happened after the end of the year. Now, if you turn over to page, let's go clear over and look at page thirty. Let me get back here. Thirty-eight. The rest of that stuff is all comparison of budget to actual. Some of the same stuff I just talked about, but you're welcome to look through that. If you have any questions, you can ask me what you want. This is actually the schedule of assessed value. And one really important thing is that is your assessed value going up or going down? You're very lucky. Yours is going up. And in two thousand nineteen, you had an assessed value of one million, one seventy-seven, eight twenty-five. And in two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, you had twen- two million, two forty-two, three thirty, so it's going up. And, uh, it just, it just follows exactly what your E A B is reported by the state, so. If you look at the next page, you'll see that based on that, and based on the percentage, the assessed valuation, the debt limitation is given by the state, that you have the opportunity, if you had to, to go out and borrow another sixty-four thousand dollars worth of money. I don't know that I would recommend you do that, but I have to always tell you what is available based on your assessed value. So you've got about as much leverage as you want. You wouldn't really wanna go borrow that. You want that number to go up, not down. And if you look over on page forty, you'll see there are only two findings. There's same findings every year. One is the ability to draft your own financial statement by yourself in the format I just showed you. And nobody can do that. I haven't seen anyone that can do that. And the state has that requirement, and, you know, it's just great. Um, also finding number two is those excess appropriations that are, we have spending in excess of what we appropriated. And we do have that, and we've got the schedule in there. And what they're gonna do is I'm gonna file the A F R and the G A D, and they're gonna come back and ask me for a letter that says that we're working on solutions, and I'm gonna mention that Claudia's a big help, that she's helping with everything, that they're, that you're doing the best you can, and that management's doing what they can to learn what the process is. That's about all we can do. And then the other thing they'll ask about the expenditure of excess of appropriations, and I'll just fit in my information. Well, that's because you guys are running utilities, and you can't, you know, the, with the market and the inflation and all the costs, you're not making it.
Um, Janet, with the new board too, this is the first time that we've had a, a seventy-person board in a long time.
Yeah.
So you've been able to assign departments, have the, well, I truly do have a financial officer that can help.
That's great. That's wonderful. Yeah. I know. You know, probably a lot of time. Well, that's different.
And I don't have a treasurer yet.
Yeah. But it, no matter what we do, and all we can tell them is that I'm assisting you to do everything you can, and that, you know, 'cause there's no way unless you have a C P A that volunteers to do that and has done this in the past, and has, has experience in governmental, so they can not prepare the financial. So just hang in there and don't worry about that. There's, you know, they can't do anything. There's, you know, they've got a lot of rules that they shouldn't have. One of them is that you need knowledge, you know.
So, so with, with new, with changes that are recommended, and the input that you're getting from the state Controller's office, are we going to continue to have to have an audit?
Yeah.
Even because we have governmental.
Proprietary funds.
Proprietary funds.
Yes, okay. And I do have that bulletin, and I assume you've got one too, that explains it, that you're, you know, and I would love to find out from Judy that they found some, something that they can do, and they know that I'm very interested in that, and I have talked to everybody in the state. I've talked to the guy that runs G A D. Everybody agrees, but nobody can do anything because the controller controls that, and she can make those exceptions that she made in that bulletin. But to really change it, she has to go to the state and change the law. And they ought to do that, you know, but they have no concern about that. They are too busy running what they're, you know, it's nothing to them, so. But I will keep protesting, and I will keep calling, and every time one of them sends me, um, an information sheet about what, what about this and what about that, I send them the answer. So that's about all we can do. And our biggest goal now is to get you all caught up, so everything's running timely. And, uh, you know, our audit manager, she walked out the door in March, so we were kind of stuck. We've got that all taken care of. We've got our help all lined up now, and we're all working away. The problem with audit is audits are very hard things to play, and so to hire somebody else that wants to do this is very tough. And not only that, but if you put this out for bid, you will be hard pressed to get a bid low enough that you can handle it. But I'm here to help you all I can without losing any independence. So my partner, who's my sister-in-law, is quality control, and she specifically does all that, so I don't touch it, because that way I can be at arm's length with you and not, you know, I do everything I can not to put time into this, and not to do anything on my part, but I can't say I'm volunteering to help you, because if I do, then I'm no longer independent, and I'm not qualified to do the audit. So we've done everything that we can do to keep you from being in that position. And we're doing everything we can not to raise these any more than we just have to, but, you know, just so we cover the employees that are working on it, so, you know. And so that's where we're at, and we'll just keep chugging along like we have been.
Okay. Well, we are pleased that it, that it's completed now, um, and I believe that we have most of everything at twenty-four, um, ready for you.
Yes.
And we've made a lot of improvements from twenty-three to twenty-four.
That's good.
And given, you know, the legal accounts are caught up, and the, and the.
And we have too, and the fact that when you and I know that I have every single piece of what I need for twenty-four, then I am doing your audit within ninety days. So the faster you get that information to me, and I can call that date certain, that I have everything off that list, I don't need anything else, then your ninety days starts to run. And I've got my staff is all set up where each one of them does a section, and Linda does the compliance, and our little Jennifer pulls it all together, and I oversee everything and make sure everything's the way it should be, and it's working pretty well. And we did that after we had our little experience last winter, so. But I am your point person. If you really are in trouble or you need anything, that's me. But any of them will help you and, you know, take care of it. And we'll, as soon as you get me everything, that will signal that day, and we'll just tie up our ninety days and get it done.
Okay.
Which is much better than it's ever been. You know, we, we decided something had to give with how this, how this went along, because it just gets strung out forever. Now, we have people that I waited almost twelve, thirteen minutes on to just do their bookkeeping, and they're, you know, until they get it all to me, that date doesn't pass by. But you guys are in a lot better shape now, and you have, you probably got everything ready to give me, so, yeah, and I, yeah. I think I got quite a bit now, so, yeah, I think we'll be good.
Um, hey, did you have a question about the, um, I think that we just had a question. I'm sure I can take it, sure.
Okay, all right. Well, if any of you think of something and you wanna know anything, just let me know. And, you know, we sound out all, all of us together, and if you have any questions along the way, just let me, let me be aware. And we'll get this put together, and then all the final papers that you have to sign, they'll all come out, see, in the next week or so.
Okay.
Because as soon as Terry gets that all sold together, I'll, I'll bring it out, or meet you, or you can come up by or whatever. We'll get it done. Okay?
All right.
All right. So you want this extra copy? Because if you do, you can have it.
Um, does everyone have one in front of them?
I do.
We do.
Okay.
Okay.
I don't have one.
This is a final audit.
Yeah, it's complete.
That's fine.
And all we're waiting on is the bound copy of.
Yes, the bound copy and the A F R I want filed, but I have to clear this thing about, uh, emails with her, and that's ready to go. We're ready to upload it. We just, I've got to talk to June, probably, and maybe it'll be tomorrow. It might be Friday if I can get ahold of her. But she has got to tell me who can make an exception to this, because there's nobody on my list that can do that, because most people don't even have as many people on the board and as many people helping as you do, and they have nobody that's available to set up, and you would have to pay to set up, you know, a computer, and everybody have an email address.
Yeah.
The one thing they did do is they said they will not talk to me if I email them. However, June's kind of afraid not to talk to me, 'cause I, if she doesn't answer me, I call her. So, but she, and she and I have always thought long very well. But there is a rule now that if I have a question, I have to take it to you, and you have to, you or Claudia have to email June. So if that happens, I will give you exactly what I want you to ask, 'cause she, she comes back now and says, I can't talk to you because I have to have somebody from the board, you know, the president, yeah, yeah. Yeah, and we'll just have to do it, but I will give you exactly what to ask her, so she doesn't get us in a whirlwind.
On an ordinary situation, or full-staffed government, the treasurer, is anyone that can share that function with a clerk?
Probably so, yeah.
All right.
Yeah, most times it is the treasurer.
Yes.
Although I know, like, over in Mount Carmel, Janet will. She usually answers. Although I know like over in Mount Carmel, Janet Will, she usually answers the questions about data.
Okay.
And then I have the treasurer answering questions with me, with the state about the AFR, so. And I think they just split it up because each one of them knows what needs to be done for those two different things.
We're still in the waiting process.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I think as long as you ask questions, just remember that she's not always nice to who she calls if it's not somebody she thinks is official. And I hate that, and I've also told her about it several times, that, you know, you're all lovely people and there's no reason to do that, but it continues, so. But she's just the way she is. You start talking to her, she is pretty nice.
Thank you.
Okay, if you want this extra one, I'll leave it here.
Yes, thank you.
And this is for Claudia. And I'll bring the rest of paperwork and everything and we'll get everything taken care of.
Oh, then you call and I'll stop it.
Okay, either way, I'll get the packet ready and we'll let you know.
I'll get in there and, so, okay.
Sounds good.
All right.
If you call, then if I have a question.
Thank you, Janet.
You're very welcome. We're moving our office now. Well, today's been kind of a crazy day.
Oh, my goodness.
Well, I didn't move anything. This time, we've always moved our offices when we had to with ourselves. But this time, we're getting older, so it's really hard to move. And that's been so much better. I could get three boxes, I think, all day.
I understand, okay.
Yep, yep. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, everyone, if you're doing have anything to add to that, then you'll pull it back with me in the next two days or so. We're trying to have the paperwork ready and I'll be ready to talk. If anything else, I'd be happy to. Well, can you hear, and like she said, those three pages there where she describes where we are and where that, what we've done, really tells us a lot. So that's, that's what we want to focus on. Thank you all for coming.
Did you have, did you have?
No, we would open the floor if you wanted anything. We wanted to.
Thank you for coming.
Okay, thank you. So if, if, like I said, we've made great progress in year twenty-three to twenty-four. How would that work? And even when it goes twenty-four, twenty-five, this on, it's mixed up. She's going to do this one, twenty-four. But if you think about it, we're already twenty-five. I'm, I'm prepared to get that box ready to send for twenty-five because it usually goes right after May. So we use, think about those two, next two audibles, auditing that. I think we're going to look much better than what we have been because we did raise our water and sewer due to trying to get that grant. And we're going to see better numbers there and not so much on the bad as we were. And the two councils got both straightened out, so it's going to get better. But overall, she said, it was still raising. And she showed you the page that went to about nineteen, only one point something, and now it's two. So we're, we're doing better. We are. But it's, it's a lot. And it's not, I don't have any trouble with it all. I do the best I can and I trust that everything is accurate on the audit because we save everything, we have all seniors, so we just have that confidence there. Okay, if we find an open floor.
Is this all going to change though? When we get the water tower worked on? It's all going to change, you know, right?
Yeah, we're going to have it.
It's going to be different.
And the, that will be the two thousand twenty-six audit in the show where we are applying for a loan. And if we get a loan like right now, what she says fifty-four is about what we're looking at. But by, by the time twenty-six comes and we actually are applying for it, you know, not if, we're already applied by, it goes in force. That's, that's going to be two thousand twenty-six or two thousand twenty-seven audit. And the funds will be more available. We know that because of the fact that we've got a new increase that we've already made. So, yes, it's going to change, but I think we're going to look better for it.
I know it'll change, but I mean, it's, you're saying it's looking better, going to look better. Well, we'll see after this tower project is completed.
Yeah. And then we turn around, if we get the grant for the redo of water main, you know, that's a whole other loan system. And we have a loan system we're trying to pay off. But I discussed that when we, when we started doing that, and one outweighs the other. Forty years, you need a new system. How many breaks have you had? Things of that sort. And when you get an EPA violation because your tower needs to be painted, you're going to have to. Larger, larger governments, they have enough in their might notes that they spend a hundred and seventy thousand to get the tower painted. We don't. Therefore, we have to borrow it and then we have to ask an EPA loan forgiveness that kind of will get us down in that bracket of just, you know, being able to pay a hundred and seventy thousand for it instead of a three hundred and twenty that we've allotted to borrow for it. So, am I explaining that correctly? So.
That part I'm understanding.
Yeah, so. But share more with me as you learn more. Everybody feel free to research and learn more about it and we'll continue to move forward. Okay, the floor is open at seven oh four. There is no one present, so now I will close the floor. We're going to move on to.
Were we supposed to vote on accepting the twenty-three audit?
Um.
Or not?
Okay, may I have a motion to accept the twenty-three?
Why would we have to or not have to? It is what it is.
Yeah. I think I've done it in the past, but I'm not sure that it's normal, so let's just go ahead. May I have a motion to accept the twenty-twenty-three audit?
I make the motion to accept the twenty-twenty-three audit.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
And all in favor?
Aye.
You want to? Okay, um. Next, I'll have the ordinance amendment, the telecommunications tax. You all received the ordinance that we have in mind that says, it says six percent. I don't know when that was, I think it was two thousand sixteen. But our maximum we can do on telecommunications is five percent. So we're just at a minimum, do that paragraph, say that five percent is what we can receive on telecommunications tax. Everyone has had a chance to see that, see that difference.
Yeah. What's that going to take to get that amended? Will the attorney have to go?
No, what's going to take to get that amended is me providing it to the board. The board taking a vote and I have a majority of yes for that to change. If I do not, then it will not get changed and we'll have to find another way. But six percent is not accurate.
We're trying to say that the attorney legal for that, but that.
He brought my attention.
The town's five percent is the maximum.
Yeah, it's what it's said.
And the attorney has already, and I'm not asking about the, the, the actual telecommunications resolution. You all talked about that the other day and we have that, the amendment is that the, the amendment was on that, that resolution was giving them the one time permit to go on anywhere they need to set up the contact, just every time about each road record for the work on. So I'm asking you is about the pack, a communications pack that we found in our, our records.
She's talking about the.
In the ordinance book. Because we need to make that change in that book. That's why I'm asking. And it's the ordinance, your man's telecommunications ordinance paragraph. Probably have it in front of you.
Looks like A. Yeah, it's an A in front of it. Here it goes.
Do you remember the page? Two three. It's seven communications thirty-six dash three dash two. Where there is a, we are currently stating that it's six percent and now we're stating it at five percent. What we're doing is updating our book to correspond with what's actually taking place.
The current law.
The current law. Not at any time that I think six percent would be a suitable for five percent. So we're at five percent, six percent, a critical error.
Do you need a motion?
I need a motion to accept the ordinance change for taxation, seven communication taxation, thirty-six dash three dash two.
I'll make a motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next thing was the ordinance amendment law enforcement decision. We don't have, we don't have that in the book anymore, but we don't have the one written about. So there's nothing on that for the season. The guttering estimate for shelter house in city hall. That was presented the other day, there's some completion on it. I'll explain it again. City halls, to do the back portion of city halls on getting their quote of four hundred and eighty dollars from Linton. A good sign, second chair over that J D, I believe is his name, to do city halls. And then for the shelter house is seventeen hundred, one inch. And that's for guttering and downstove. Back here, we're, got new erosion going on, that's why we named it back here. And then at the shelter house, we actually have water coming in on the kitchen area from the east side through the floor. And that's why that guttering is needed. We went and did a trench so that that's not collecting and coming in at ground level. But overall, we didn't need to gutter there. So those are the amounts that I have for, to put gutter guards on it, which is, you know, probably more needed on places where there's trees, moths, leaves to be coming in. Right here, we don't need gutter guards. But for the two buildings, it was thirteen sixty. So for the shelter house, the lawn was ten forty, leaving three twenty for city hall. So you guys tell me about city hall, but I'm, I'm saying that that's not necessary. And at this time, we don't have to put gutter guards on at the shelter house. But I do recommend that we, we do go ahead and spend approximately about a seventeen twenty for the downstove and gutter at the shelter house. This is the only bid I have because it's the limit of a lower bid. I'm not required, it's the one that means that we don't have to get more than three bids on there. But I could, I could try to get another one, but some of those stores locally, they have several bids on guttering for their residential and Linton tends to be them. So I don't know if we want to waste our time and energy trying to find more bids for such a low amount of spend at this time anyway. So I'm going to ask for a motion to accept the guttering bid for the shelter house in city hall. You are both.
Now, did your, did your price include gutter guards?
At this time, I'm not asking for gutter guards. I'm asking for four hundred and eighty for city halls and seventeen twenty for the shelter house.
And how much was the other guards?
For the gutter, gutter guards for just the shelter house was an additional one thousand forty dollars. And the city hall was an additional two hundred and twenty dollars.
And I think we had talked about this, but this refresh my memory. I think we discussed the not getting the gutter guards because of the shelter house or the park grant may possibly change.
We don't know for what all the park grants are going for.
I just, I can't remember.
And with that point, you know, if we wanted a way to train to consider that with guttering, that's a, that's a possibility too. I think we've had the bulk of our raise. Who, I mean, we might have another four. No, and I used to do the same thing, it's not going to be much. But when we had that flood, it would be the right, correct, one?
Yes.
Yeah. So if you all would like me to sit this off, you can. But I know it is something they've put on the list that we need to consider guttering for those ones.
And this, this thirteen hundred goes through the east side of the shelter house or both sides?
Um, the, it's seventeen twenty for both sides of the shelter house. Here's the drawing. And if you guys want to look at it through the bottom, the bottom section is the shelter house of where he wants to go, the bath. And that's covering all of it. And if we wanted to cover just the area where we found the leak, which would be the south.
East.
East side, we could just do that. I mean, I can, I can push it out, but we don't do it all right now. We haven't seen any water problems anywhere else other than that southeast side, on the other side of the double doors, on the south side, to know that water. And it truly was just on the east wall, on the southeast wall. That's in the kitchen. And the odds of us having other water coming in anytime soon are slim to nothing. We don't know for sure about all the grant, the park grant is going to be for us. Even though we're getting new bathrooms and working on that building and support, I just don't know how much we're going to be pulling the shelter house.
I haven't, I haven't seen anything.
Right.
About.
Didn't think it was better than all, just to get it on the east side. Where the water was coming in, we might get the west side or should we do the old building?
My, my affirmation, as I've been watching, I think it ought to be all. I really do. But my question is, with this grant coming, what more are they going to do?
Yes, and you know what? Once we put that, the guttering up on that east side and they redo that back portion for the bathrooms, is that going to change any of that roofing or ceiling, roofing in that, that part of the building?
That's what I want to see.
Yeah.
Because like, if they're going to do a whole bunch of rebuilding on that building, how much of this new stuff that we're putting on will we have to take on?
Yeah, it might be wise for the board to consider the pay to this to train.
Do we ever get clarification if we can charge to rent it if they do anything to the building? Or have we lost that income if they work on the shelter?
I haven't heard anything recently. It was, it's a good question. I'll find, I'll find out.
May I have a motion to table? Do you guttering this one or do the shelter house and city hall just?
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we, you know, do delay it a little bit, but it may not have to be a string. Just got to know how much they're going to tear off on the new stuff that they're putting on. That's what we need to know.
I agree. I think we should keep it on the agenda.
Okay. So we're going to table the statement and keep it on the agenda for that motion?
Yes, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
All righty, that is all we have this evening. Special meeting, we only covered what is on the agenda. So we have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
I'll beg it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
I think you talked about.